Everyone, call to order. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholicistic School Board, Tuesday, April 3, 2022. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the Board's YouTube channel. Tonight, we have trustees attending in person and trustees participating remotely. In order to be recognized, please use the chat box only and type "hand up" to be placed in queue. For those in the boardroom, please remember to project your voice loudly because there are some audio issues tonight. And you can turn your cameras on to speak. Trustees, please remember that if you speak when you are not recognized or when we do not have the flow, your mic will be muted. First order of business is land acknowledgement, opening prayer, national anthem, and the oath of citizenship. I ask staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today...
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Our steeped-in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
To honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledged and thanked.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Could you please lead us in opening prayer, the national anthem, and the oath of citizenship?
Thank you. I'd ask that trustees join me making the side of our cake. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, heavenly Father, look upon us and hear our prayers during this holy season of Lent. By all the good works you inspire, help us to discipline our body and to be renewed in our spirit. By your Spirit, help us to know what is right and to be eager in doing your will. Teach us to find a new life through penance, keep us from sin, and help us live by your commitment of love. God of love, bring us back to you. Send your Spirit to make us strong in faith and act in good works. May acts of penance bring us your goodness, open our hearts to your love, and prepare us for the coming feast of the resurrection of Jesus. Lord, during this blessed season, nourish us with your Word of life and make us one with you in love and prayer. Father, our source of life, we reach out with joy to grasp your hand. Let us walk more readily in your ways. Guide us in your gentle mercy. We're left to ourselves, we cannot do your will. We ask this through your Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever, amen. Amen. Father, Holy Spirit.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. Moving on to the first order of business, motions adopted in camera. There were no motions adopted in camera. Information received in camera. Vice Chair Agnew, please read the information received in camera.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. The following information was received in camera. Colette Agro retired effective March 22, 2022. Andre Iera retired effective March 31, 2022. Cheryl Breeden, Joseph Juris, Don Lupo, Paul McDermott, Melissa Olmstead, Mark Shaw, and Leanne Skinner will retire effective June 30, 2022. Rosanna Masrangelo resigned effective March 22, 2022.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew.
Going over, Mr. Chair. Vice Chair Agnew missed the information received in camera. The transfer of Vice Principal Pitt from our two same urn of death, I believe.
I'm sorry, I read what was on my notes.
Trustee Yatamasi, if you have something to say at this meeting, I'm asking you, at the beginning of the meeting, kindly use the chat box and mark your hands up. Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Thank you. Moving on to the next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Come with it.
Moved by trustee Ohan Chanata, seconded by trustee...
O'Brien.
O'Brien. I shall now take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Ohan Chanata.
In favor.
Trustee Guzo.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Fair.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa.
In favor.
Trustee Yatamasi.
Against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Bowie.
In favor.
Trustee Mashe Amor.
In favor.
Trustee Tokiro.
In favor.
We have still in favor, one opposed. The motion carries, the agenda is approved. Moving on to the next order of business, declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee O'Brien, sorry, I did not see your hand up. Trustee O'Brien, go ahead.
The budget report, which is...
Trustee O'Brien.
The budget report for the second quarter. This item deals with the salaries of teachers. My wife is an occasional teacher, but they should be there for her. We'll be declaring a conflict of interest on this item. I believe it is 10.2.
10.2.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Any other declarations of conflict of interest?
Mr. Chair, I'll declare the same for the same reasons.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. So, I have 10.2, let us trustee De Rosa. Okay, we shall now move on to the next order of business, which is presentations. The first, we are going one presentation tonight, and that's Director Daly's school update, Director Daly.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. We're at the point in the year where we can actually start to talk a little bit about next year, or at least planning for the spring. So, tonight's update, a little bit of where we've been at since we returned after March break, and then a little bit of where we're going over the next several months. So, trustees would be aware that over the past week or so, we have had parents or given parents the opportunity in elementary, in the elementary panel, for a change in learning environment if they so desired. So, that process went from March 23 until last Friday, April 1, to move their children from St. Clair Viscici back to in-person learning or vice versa. Those requested changes will come into effect after Easter on Tuesday, April 19. So, staff are looking at those requests right now. At secondary, students may make that move at the midterm point of the semester, which I believe is April 22. In terms of movement from St. Clair to in-person, approximately 313 students will be moving from St. Clair Viscici back to an in-person environment, and 24 students moving from in-person to St. Clair. So, as I said, staff will be working over the next week to ensure that transfer process happens and also to kind of clean up any possible mistakes or errors in the submissions. Trustees would also be aware that provincial assessments are scheduled and have been taking place this year. Certainly, the Grade 9 math assessment took place during Quads 1 and 2 and will continue in second semester. A bit of a change this year with regards to the Ontario Secondary School Literacy Test. Some of our students who are writing the test this year is back on as a graduation requirement. We know that that requirement had been paused a couple of years because of COVID. All of the provincial assessments, EQAO assessments this year are being delivered in a digital format as opposed to paper format. So, that presents some challenges. For our larger secondary schools, the number of devices available in order for students to complete the test is somewhat a challenge. So, we will need to share devices between some of our bigger schools. So, IT and our schools are working on that now. At some of our mid-range or smaller schools, they should have enough devices to be able to run the OSSLT over a number of days because it's in a digital format now. It does not have to be done in one sitting in the same day everywhere. But for our larger schools, because that will create some scheduling issues for our larger schools on the days when all of the Grade 10 students are writing, Grades 9, 11, and 12 students will work asynchronously at home for that day. It's not unlike the process that we used to use pre-COVID. In some of our bigger schools, we would kind of segregate the population between those writing at school and then have a modified timetable. With the number of students that will be writing will need, kind of need all hands on deck with prepares to staff to be able to vigilate the OSSLT. The Grade 3 and 6 assessments will take place in our elementary schools in May and June. Again, both assessments have a new digital format. So, our board staff, CDC staff have attended a number of information sessions to help prepare for this process. School administration and teachers will be also going through some of those information sessions over the next several weeks. The ministry announced a few weeks ago a Learning Recovery Action Plan, where boards were allocated fairly substantial amounts of money to put some tutoring and support programs in place. In terms of how that money flows to boards, it's really done in two chunks. The first one is to take up the time period between April and August 31, so essentially the spring and summer. And then the second half of that funding will flow to look after the September to December time period. In terms of kind of operationalizing that, we really kind of split it into three sort of sessions. So, we're looking at our spring tutoring session right now, so April, May, and June, and then some tutoring and support over the summer period. So, that's our second phase. And then the third phase will be when we come back to school in September. So, those sessions will begin this month. The tutoring sessions are going to focus on math and literacy skills, Grades 1 to 8, as well as our Grade 9 math program, and also kind of a general skills building session as well. So, we're in the process now of getting that information out to schools. It went out this week's memo. Planning is also underway to look at what options we can offer in the summer. And some of our other summer programs, that information will be coming shortly. I think the summer school, credit-bearing summer school information was going out to secondary and graded parents this evening, if that hasn't gone out already. So, good to get that up and running again. Over the last two summers, we've had lots of interest in our summer programming, whether it was for credit or not. So, we're hopeful that that will continue, and the programs will be open to all students, and we'll be able to support students throughout the summer and into our return to school in September. Extracurriculars of varying degrees have been going on throughout the school year. Some challenges, obviously, with our in-person extracurricular events, the way we started the school year. Lots of kind of inventive things that schools have been doing remotely. But now with a little bit more flexibility in terms of our ability to deliver in-person extracurriculars, those have started to take off. And it's the kind of a combination between a couple of student groups. I think it was Santa Fe, some Holy Trinity group meeting today. Some other student equity groups meeting in person at Santa Fe, so that was nice to see. Our winter sports season, which was really kind of cut up and truncated and rescheduled a number of times because of the COVID situation, is coming to a conclusion this week, both at elementary and secondary. It has been great over the last couple of weeks. I'll speak from a personal perspective. To be able to get out to schools and see parents and students and staff all being able to enjoy those extracurricular activities. I want to thank our CDC staff here at Chris Dina in particular, and HCAA for having made up schedules, redo schedules, and certainly thank our school admin, our teacher and community volunteer coaches who've had to be really flexible with their own calendars in order to support our students. I think we had a great couple of weeks to wind up the winter season, and spring season will be starting shortly, both at elementary and secondary as our kids are able to get outside in the coming months. A couple of other, I guess, information updates. And this information did go out to parents last week. One of the, I guess, one of the kind of the casualties of COVID has been an inability to, for public health, to put in place a school-based immunization program that we've run in the past for our intermediate students, our Grade 7 and 8 students. And that's been not just here at home, but I think that's been a challenge across the province. So, those school-based clinics are going to be up and running again this month. These are not for COVID vaccines, they're not COVID-19 clinics. And for these particular vaccinations, they are offered to students only in Grade 7 and 8 who have parent or guardian consent. So, just a reminder, a couple of the changes have been in place since we've come back from the March break. So, while students and staff are still expected to do their daily screening, there's not onsite mandatory onsite confirmation of that screening at the school level. We know that masks are no longer required for students, staff, and visitors in the school. They are available. PPE is still available to all of our staff, whether it's masks, gowns, eye protection. We do encourage people to use PPE if they feel they need to. We have plenty of supply, that supply will continue to come. So, it is at the school level. The limitations that were put in place around recess, coordinating, and distancing have also been lifted. How we use space in the school has been opened up since the end of March. So, that includes things like larger gatherings for liturgies or assemblies, extracurriculars, and sporting events. Some of the measures that will continue. So, first of all, staff and students may choose to continue to wear masks and/or eye protection. Staff and students, although there's not a confirmation screening at the school level, they must still continue to self-screen every day. We're still reminding parents and staff that if they're feeling unwell or certainly if they fail the screener, to stay home. The hand and respiratory kit that we've had in place in schools throughout the last two years is still in place. Trustees would be aware that we had kind of initial allocation of HEPI units that were able to place in our first, in all of our kindergarten classrooms, then in some of our speculative classrooms, our health rooms and music rooms, as we were allocated more. We've continued to receive additional units. So, as of yesterday, there are individual units in all of our classrooms in 42 of the 55 schools of the board. And the other units to get from 42 schools to 55 schools were expecting to be delivered this week. And a reminder went out to parents this week or last week as well, that rapid antigen tests continue to be available for our students and our staff. We're well-stocked in that regard as well. The case and contact management system that we had in place earlier in the year is really not in place anymore. That case contact management is not ongoing either at the school level or at the public health level. We are still letting parents know if there's a potential of a probable COVID case in their classroom, communicating that to parents. We continue to do that. Schools continue to complete the attendance report form. I can't remember what it's called, but it is up on the Ontario Attendance Tracker every day for each school, indicates percentage of students absent at the school that particular day. So, that continues, at least for the time being. And whether or not that provincial guidance or that provincial requirement will continue after Easter, we'll be looking for some information from the province on that. And again, the advice that we, or direction that we've given to schools to help support parents is, when they've completed that daily screener, to take direction from the screener. So, it outlines very clearly if a student's not feeling well, if a student's test positive via rapid test, the process that they should follow in terms of either staying home from school, or whether they have to isolate or mask when they return to school. So, those are the updates as of tonight. A reminder that any further updates, we can communicate directly through the school messenger with parents, communicate through Board's Twitter, Instagram, Facebook accounts, and on our board website as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that trustees may have, either on the presentation itself or how our return to school has been since March.
Thank you, Director Daly. I shall now open up the floor to trustees, four questions. On the speakers list, I have Vice Chair Agnew, trustee Ohan Chanata, trustee Guzo, trustee Carabella, and trustee Yatamasi. Vice Chair Agnew, go ahead.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So, just a question, I'm not sure, probably for Dr. Daly, but it's a question with respect to students who are looking to do a lap year, if you will, if I'm using that terminology correctly. And I've had a number of parents reach out to me, either inquiring about that or just, you know, the consideration of it for a variety of different reasons. The ones I'm hearing are, you know, kids miss so much because of COVID, they want to have another year for their child to play football or hockey, they're not quite sure what they want to do. And so, they're sort of looking to that as an option. And I'm wondering if you could speak or someone could speak to, you know, what's involved in that consideration? What are, you know, what are some of the details around parents who might be looking at that for their student? Is it feasible, is it not? Is it something that we approve? Just, you know, a little bit more about that. It's come up a lot over the last few weeks as people have been selecting courses for next year.
I'm going to pass this to Director Daly.
Thank you, and thanks for the question, Vice Chair Agnew. Certainly, there is a, I would say, a not uncommon tradition of students coming back for an additional semester or maybe even more than that. It's, I guess I would say, the discussions that would happen at the school level would probably revolve around students who have graduated. So, if you graduated, there would certainly be a bit of an expectation that you had a plan in place to return, and probably more of a focus on an academic plan as opposed to maybe an extracurricular plan. And really, that sort of conversation probably kicks in a little bit more when we talk about really high-credit earners. So, it's not all about funding, but there is a different funding model for students who acquire, I think it's over 34 credits. So, really, we just want to ensure that when students come back for an additional half-year or a year, they have a plan in place. And I think those are the conversations that do happen at the school level. And we certainly don't discourage it, but we do want students to kind of come back eyes open and ready to either try something different. Oftentimes, it might be they've looked at a career path that might require different credits or upgrade or a combination of those things. So, it's not out of the ordinary for sure. And maybe because of the circumstances you mentioned, we might see more demand for that this year.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I need you to have a follow-up question.
I do. Thank you very much, Dr. Daly. Just to follow up on that, and you mentioned funding, and I'm wondering if there's any other considerations that are taken into... I wonder if there's any other things that are taken into consideration? Like, I think about things like capacity, you know, the ability to house additional students, should they come back, the funding piece. What are some things that are possibly taken into consideration that, you know, may, that may preclude, if you will, you know, sort of that automatic approval? I just think there's things probably to be considered when people are making these requests.
Well, I think if they're goodwill requests around looking to improve academics or, again, potentially need to catch up on some courses that might lead to a different pathway. I think if a student's 19 years old and they have 35 credits, and they're looking to come back and take a couple of courses and play a sport, I think that would maybe involve a lengthier conversation.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Daly. Moving on to the speakers list, we have trustee Ohan Chanata. Trustee Ohan Chanata.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Daly. So, I'm going back to the EQAO assessments and the devices. So, how many devices are we missing in the larger schools? So, how many devices would we need so that the schools, the larger schools, don't have to share?
Director Daly.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to redirect that to Superintendent Cole because he's been working at the school level. And it's not so much we don't have enough devices in the schools, we don't have a one-to-one sort of setup for the schools. But I'll turn it over to Superintendent Cole.
Sure. And through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, trustee Ohan Chanata. With regards to your question, it's about not wanting to take devices out of other places that they might be needed as well. So, you know, whether it's a computer science course or other courses, business courses that use those devices, we just don't have, I'd say we're probably a couple hundred short at least on hand at each school to be able to say that we have enough devices that we don't have to share. So, we have been having conversations with schools about this since, well, since the beginning of semester too, so February, and have kind of, you know, asked them how they best feel it could be rolled out and have the least disruption to their community. So, that's why you see slightly different plan for our smaller schools in Broonton and Oakville, and then a different... and then a different plan for the larger schools in Milton and Holton Hills. And the schools have been collaborating together. So Oakville Schools have been working together with Burlington Schools and Milton Schools with Holton Hill Schools. Like I said, to come up with a plan that they feel will be of most benefit to students with the least disruption. So I hope that answers your question.
The plan, then, because now it's gone digital, they used to be paper, is the plan to acquire more devices so that next year, there is no, not that I'm against sharing, I love sharing, but is there a plan to get devices in each one of these schools so there isn't, you know, a concern of taking it from another department or another class?
The plan, sorry, excuse me, through you, Mr. Chair. The plan, Trustee Ohan Chanata, is to meet with schools post OSSLT, get a sense of what worked, what didn't work, so we can better plan for next year.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe just to add. Yeah, just to add, certainly in terms of the amount of devices that we have in the system, both for students and staff, it's leaps and bounds ahead of where we were two years ago. Essentially because of the circumstance we found ourselves in and also some support through government funding. I think one of the things too, as we come back to OSSLT on masks with all our grades, that one of the parts around flexibility digital is it doesn't have to be done all same day, same time. We're kind of working through those kinks this year, and hopefully we'll be able to adapt and handle it for next year.
Thank you. On the speakers list, we have Trustee Guzzo next. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. My question is around overnight field trips. I'm wondering, since things have been lifted, and I know other boards are returning to this, what are board is doing in regards to overnight field trips if that go-ahead has been given to staff?
Director Daly, who would be the best person there?
I can start. I don't know if I'm the best person, but I'll start. So, Trustee Guzzo, where we've started with is overnight trips that are tied directly to the curriculum. And there's not many of them, but for a couple of our high schools, I think two or three, the outdoor head trips, although you can still deliver the curriculum without an overnight trip. It is really kind of a key component of why students take those classes. So some of those trips, we're trying to work through the planning to see if they can make sense. One of the, you know, one of the concerns around any of the trips, but certainly those ones, are they are some distance, they're not in urban areas. So if students or staff do fall ill, there's some other considerations to think about as to how you might isolate students, or staff for that matter, how you get them back, you know, how their parents would get them back safely. In terms of, I guess, end-of-year, I don't want to say graduation trips, but I guess that's what we would maybe call them at our elementary end-of-year, either graduation or intermediate trips. I don't think we've gone through that approval process yet. But maybe I can ask Superintendent, I don't want to put on Superintendent Cole, but maybe Superintendent Cole or one of our family schools, superintendents?
Superintendent D'Alvo.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Again, I can certainly start, and maybe my family's friends will help me out with this one. Yeah, I think we're still in the discussion phase with schools around what that might look like. I have been working with our phys ed consultant and some of the schools that are interested in the outdoor head trip, and just trying to work through some of the troubleshooting and some of the contingency plans we could put in place to make those trips successful. And I think that'll be our first sort of kick at what it would look like to be able to run one of these trips as we have in the past, under new conditions and with sort of the new reality of COVID sort of potentially impacting those trips. And wanted to make sure that we're keeping staff and students safe, as Director Daly mentioned already. With regards to overnight trips such as graduation trips, I'm probably not the best person to answer that one, to be honest.
Maybe Superintendent McKeich, could you give us a bit of an update on that?
Sure. And through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Guzzo, we've started talking about it. One of the concerns that we have under consideration is about the health and safety of students and staff when they fall ill. And as we've seen as of late, we've had, because of the lifting of the restrictions, greater analysis that are being reported both from staff and students. So it is in the consideration process right now.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up question?
I do. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So just to clarify, or I guess kind of a follow-up. So are we saying that there has been no guidance? I just, I'm trying to understand, because I've actually gotten some requests from schools, from staff and from families, asking about this. So I'm just trying to understand what other boards are doing, because my understanding is these trips have resumed. And if we've reached out to any other boards to see how they are handling these.
Superintendent, Superintendent McKeich.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Guzzo, we have been talking to Holton District because we sit at the same table in terms of public health. So at this time, they have not resumed their overnight trips due to the same considerations and potentially when staff fall ill and there's no one to supervise, there is that financial component that would impact both the students and the staff and the trip as a whole. So at this time, each Holton District has not resumed the overnight trips at all.
I'd like to pass it on to Director Daly to add a few points to that, Director Daly.
Yes, not a point, maybe a question. I'll be honest with you, Trustee Guzzo, I'm not aware of other boards that have re-instituted them. So I'd be happy to reach out to them if you want to let me know if you're aware of a couple of those boards. I'm just not aware of them personally.
Thank you. We shall now move on. On the speakers list, on the speakers list is Trustee Karavala, Trustee Yann Thomasi, Trustee Masri Amor, Trustee O'Brien, Trustee Murphy, and Trustee Ohan Chanata. Trustee Karavala, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a question about the remote learning. So 313 people have, students have left to go to in-person. And I'm wondering, how many students do we have now in the remote school? And what are your next year's projections and facility of the remote learning being offered?
Thank you, Trustee Karavala. I'll pass this to Superintendent DeLavo. Superintendent DeLavo.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Trustee Karavala, for your question. So 313 students are leaving St. Clair, and 24 students are going into St. Clair with the turnaround survey. So as of April 19th, the virtual school will have 823 students for the remainder of the year. So that's until the end of June. For September, with our initial survey that went out in March, we are showing about 241 students going to St. Clair Facette C for September. Parents will have an opportunity in June to confirm that's their decision. The survey will go out to all parents. So that parents who may not have chosen or the parents who made a decision that they wanted to be there for September will have that opportunity. And for September, St. Clair will continue to be a kindergarten to grade eight school with the F.I. program being offered, the F.I. program will be offered there as well.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a follow-up, a different question.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you want me in the queue, or can I ask my next?
Go ahead. I'll give you the second question later. Go ahead, Trustee Karavala.
Okay, thank you. Has to do with the funding for tutoring. So do we assess that we will have enough funding for the tutoring to help our students?
I'll pass this to Director Daly.
Thank you.
Yes, well, there's quite a bit allocated to the board, so I don't think we'll have any problems with any.
Okay. And a follow-up question to that would be, if we're in the happy position of having extra funding left over, what happens to that funding? Does it go back to the ministry or can it be put towards future academics?
Director Daly.
I think the ministry will probably have a close eye on this funding. And I would anticipate if the money's not spent, then they would be looking to recoup it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Trustee Yann Thomasi. Trustee Yann Thomasi, you have the floor. Trustee Yann Thomasi. Okay, we shall move on to Trustee Masri Amor, and then I will come back to Trustee Yann Thomasi. Trustee Masri Amor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. My question is just regarding any graduation updates or in-person graduations? Or do we know any information about that?
Director Daly.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So limitations on in-person gatherings have been lifted. So there's certainly no reason why schools can't plan those events. I have seen via social media some information coming out from our secondary schools more than elementary schools. So what I would anticipate that that's the way that they're going to happen unless, you know, something really drastic happens between now and then.
Trustee Masri Amor, do you have a follow-up question?
I do have a follow-up question regarding exams. I know there's been talks about them. I know myself and some of my teachers have been talking. Most of us, I think, know that there'll be no exams, but just clarify that.
Director Daly.
Yeah, the end-of-year or end-of-semester assessment procedures are the same as they were for semester or quad one, quad two.
Thank you. Trustee Yann Thomasi, are you there? Trustee Yann Thomasi? If not, we shall come back. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, and this may or may not be germane to the subject, so please tell me if it's not. To Director Daly, Director Daly, at the beginning of the pandemic, the ministry did give trustees the option of attending their meetings remotely. Has the ministry spoken whether or not they're going to continue that in the fall or just continue?
Pass this on to Director Daly. Thank you. My understanding, Trustee O'Brien, is that the requirement for trustees to attend in-person that's kind of been waived will remain in place until the end of this term, so the end of this current term.
And then just continue to do so.
And then it would revert back to, I guess, the old rules for lack of a better term. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, follow-up question?
No, I have none.
Thank you. Trustee Yann Thomasi says he's there, but Trustee Yann Thomasi, we cannot hear you. Can you check your mic, Trustee Yann Thomasi? We shall come back, Trustee Yann Thomasi. Maybe you have to log off and log back on. Trustee Murphy is next up on the speakers list. Trustee Yann Thomasi, we can't hear you. Sorry. I think you got to log off and log on. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's through you to Superintendent Cole. With regards to the EQAO test and the OSSLT test, can students use their own devices?
Superintendent D'Alvo.
The short answer, Trustee Murphy, is no, because the device has to be configured a certain way to be able to access the portal, the software that the ministry is using. So we want to make sure, that's part of the work that IT Services will be doing to get devices ready so that when kids sit down, there are no issues. You know, all the toolbars they need will be there. You know, any of the documents they'll need access will be able to easily access. We don't feel we could do that with students' own devices.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Yes, follow-up to Superintendent Cole. Given that we're coming out of the pandemic, or since they were coming out of it, and given that things are changing, we're back in person, and there's been a lot of disruption to the lives of the students, and especially the grade threes aren't really accustomed to or may find it more stressful to be in the environment where they have to do the EQAO test. Have we received any direction from the Minister of Education on how better to prepare students? Or has there been any change overall in our approach and our guidance that were given to students before the test?
Superintendent D'Alvo.
Certainly. And through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I have one of those grade threes at home myself, and we talk about it sometimes. You know, my daughter is in grade three this year, and so she's let me know what she thinks about writing EQAO this year and why she has to write it this year. And her grade fours last year didn't write it last year, but that's neither here nor there. The simple answer is that the training sessions that will come for teachers over the month of April will be to familiarize them with the sort of the process, but also to be able to make sure that they're preparing students. So they do have practice assessments that students can access ahead of time. It really is meant to be as low stress as possible for students. And I would argue our teachers for years have done a really good job in preparing students for EQAO, especially our young ones, all of them, but our grade threes certainly for the first time going through it. So I think those good practices will continue. The only thing that's new is just the idea that, you know, that we'll be doing it electronically. There is an option for students to do part of the assessment in grade three as a written assessment if the teacher and the student feel that they'd be better, would do better in that format. So that is a concession the ministry has made as well.
Thank you, Superintendent D'Alvo. I see Trustee Yann Thomasi.
Thank you.
Trustee Yann Thomasi, you have to turn your mic on. You have the floor. You have the floor, Trustee Yann Thomasi. Can't hear you, Trustee Yann Thomasi. Can you hear us? We can't hear you. There's an audio issue. Did you log off and on? Come back. Okay, we shall move on to the next speaker and then come back to Trustee Yann Thomasi. Trustee Ohan Chanata, you are next.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Just sorry I was turning the camera. Just a quick question through you to Director Daly. Are we still speaking to public health in the same frequency that we have been? Has anything changed in Albuquerque?
Director Daly, I think it's Superintendent McKeich. Superintendent McKeich.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Ohan Chanata, we're actually meeting tomorrow. We have been meeting regularly to talk about COVID updates, if there are any, and also as of late, the immunization clinic. So we do continue to meet with them, and, but they are, their guidance is that they're following the ministry requirements of lifting the COVID requirements. So they're holding firm for now.
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanata, you have a follow-up question?
I do. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Cordero. Just curious, back a couple meetings ago, you probably know what I'm going to ask, maybe. Is there any thought process at CTK, so Holton Hills, to be changing the lunch hours and going back to the two with all the restrictions being lifted and no more capacity issues? Is there any thought of doing that in this school term?
Thank you, Superintendent Cordero.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and to Trustee Ohan Chanata. So we actually did make that change already. We started that change immediately following the return from the March break. So I think the date was the first date of the return to a regular two-lunch period day with grade nines co-horted with grade elevens and grade tens with grade twelves. That began March 20th, so we're back to normal.
So yeah, so I must have missed the email, so my apologies if that's already happened, but I didn't see it. So that's fantastic.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up question, Trustee Ohan Chanata?
I do have one more. Can I just, can you just bear with me? I just want to, so I had people from Holton Hills write to me, and we're not going to change it, and it's more rhetorical comment. And I feel like by doing my job as a trustee, I really just need, there are people in our system in Holton Hills that have come to me and, you know, are still quite concerned with the restrictions being lifted. So I'm not here to maybe ask us to do anything, but I would be remiss not to be their voice at the table. I've been trying to do it for a couple of meetings. So there are still people in Holton Hills that are concerned with the restrictions being lifted. I just really wanted to make that comment. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanata. Trustee Yann Thomasi, final opportunity to speak. Can you hear us? And you have the floor. Trustee Yann Thomasi. I think we have lost you. So saying, okay, he is back to meeting. Okay, that's fine. But seeing all the speakers, I just want to highlight a couple of great things that have happened in our school this week. We have celebrated our exceptional students across our schools at the annual student award of excellence ceremony. Congratulations. Congratulations to all our student recipients. And this week is a steam week in our schools, and all elementary and staff will be participating in science and technology, engineering and arts, and mathematics for this week. Thanks to our administrators, teachers, and staff for all the wonderful work you do. Moving on to the next order of business, that's delegations. A total of one delegation was declined. And trustees have been notified about the decline delegation. Trustee Caravella, you have your hand up?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I just, I understand it was declined, but I don't know the topic of the decline delegation. Is that something you can share, please?
Trustee Caravella, I think the delegation was shared with trustee Director Daly, was shared. It's supposed to be shared.
I think the fact it was denied was shared and the reason for it. So the delegation was denied because the delegates were not from home. The request for the delegation was around flying pro-life flag at the board office in secondary schools in the month of May.
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee Caravella? Okay? Moving on to the next order of business, which is approval of the minutes. The minutes of the March 22nd, 22 regular meeting is in your package. Are there any errors, additions, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none?
Yes, sorry, Mr. Chair. I
Trustee Caravella?
Couldn't type hand up in time. I have a question about item 8.12 in the minutes, and it says trustee DeRosa was asked to leave the meeting, and trustee Yatomasi was asked to leave the meeting. But if I recall, they were removed from the meeting. And I think we need to provide the basis for their removal and what bylaw was used to justify their removal. I think those are details that need to be included.
Very good question, trustee Caravella. The way the minutes are defined in the bylaws is that we mention what is done in the meeting and not what is said of what would occur. So our bylaws are very clear under the minutes section of our bylaws that is bylaw 15, 15.1, 15.3, contents of the minutes. So we are very clear about what is recorded in the minutes. So I think it's accurate. Thank you.
I, okay, well, I think that they were removed instead of being asked to leave. I think there's a difference. I won't be able to approve the minutes.
Yeah, that's what's within that. I'm okay with that. Okay, so do you want to make a change? Do you want to amend the minutes, trustee Caravella? Change the word from removed to Can you repeat that again?
Well, they were removed from the meeting, and I think it's an important, this is serious when we remove a trustee from a meeting where they can't fulfill their duties, responsibilities. So I think it has to say why they were removed from the meeting.
So trustee Caravella, I didn't explain the reasoning why the explanation is not there. It's because of bylaws didn't state what should be in our meeting minutes. So that's not because of bylaws that are here or that. Now, you have asked to change your word from asked to leave to remove, right?
Correct.
So what's the wording there? I do not have the minutes open here. Rosie, could you guide me here?
Just to replace the word asked to leave the meeting to were removed from, was removed from the meeting.
So the word removed to change to leave?
No, leave to remove.
Okay, so change the word leave to remove. Is that what you're looking for, trustee Caravella?
It's better, thank you.
So so we'll have to handle this like a motion. We are amending the minutes, so I'll need a mover and I'll need a secondary.
Okay, so I will move the amendment to change the wording to trustee DeRosa was removed from the meeting and trustee Yatomasi were removed from the meeting.
Okay. I'm going to ask for a secondary. I'll start it. Trustee O'Brien. Seconds. So we are talking about item 8.1 in the minutes, where trustee Caravella is asked to change the word leave the meaning to remove from the meeting. Trustee Caravella, it's self-explanatory. Do you want to say anything else to this before I take it to a vote?
No, we can take it to a vote. It was explained just now. Thank you.
Thank you. I shall take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Guzal? Trustee Guzal?
Sorry, we're just, are approving the minutes as amended or just on trustee Caravella's motion?
Let me, thank you. So trustee, we are working on the approval of the minutes, which is in the package. Under item 8.1, trustee Caravella is asking to amend the minutes to change the wording from trustee Yatomasi and trustee DeRosa were asked to leave the meeting. That's going to be trustee Caravella saying to change that to remove. So leave the meeting to remove from the meeting. It was moved by trustee Caravella, seconded by trustee O'Brien. So trustee Guzal, how do you vote?
In favor.
Voice chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Yatomasi? Trustee Yatomasi, if you have audio problems, just put it in the chat box. So what does no mean? Are you in favor or against or?
He said above, Mr. Chair, that he was against the approval of the minutes.
Oh, against, okay. Thank you. We are voting on the amendment. Trustee Yatomasi, we're not voting on the minutes.
Put against again.
Against, okay. Trustee Caravella?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie? Trustee Masri Amor?
Favor.
Trustee Tokiba? So and trustee Ohrenzenota?
I abstain. I have to watch the video to see what the printing was.
So we have, there are six in favor, one opposed, one abstained. The amendment to the minutes carries the word changed from leave to remove. We shall now vote on the minutes as amended.
Oh, Mr. Chair, sorry, I have my hand up for something else.
Thank you, trustee Caravella. You have the floor.
Thank you. I'm getting, trying to coordinate. So I just noticed in the, in the minutes, in the people who were present there, it says that a Mr. or Mrs., I don't know, Jay Isto, legal counsel, Keel Catrell, were electronically present at the last board meeting. I don't recall them being announced as being there, and I'm wondering why we had legal counsel and sort of who invited them there, or what was their purpose for, for being there?
Thank you, trustee Caravella. I do recollect announcing at the beginning of our meeting that we have legal present, but I shall pass it on to Director Daly to find out why they were there.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So legal counsel from Keel Catrell was available to answer questions with regards to trustee distribution. So that's why, that's why they were at them.
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee Caravella, does it answer your worry?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I wasn't aware that that was the purpose they were there for. That would have been helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. So I shall now take it to a vote. We are voting on the minutes as amended. Voice chair Agnew?
Approved.
In favor.
You know what I mean.
Okay. Trustee Murphy?
I also approve and am in favor.
Thank you, trustee Murphy.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Yatomasi, that is against. Okay, trustee Caravella?
Well, opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amor?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
Trustee Ohrenzenota?
Abstain.
Trustee Guzal?
Approve.
In favor, trustees. So we have four in favor, three opposed, one abstained. The motion carries that this has been approved. We shall now move on to the next order of business, which is business arising from previous meetings. The summary of outstanding items from previous meetings is, the chart is in your package for information. Next order of business is item eight, which is action item. First item, the following is the notice of motion from the March 22nd, 22 regular board meeting. Trustee Guzal, please read your motion.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board is committed to ensuring that our staff, parents, and most importantly, our students feel they belong and reports that impact our students are important for our school communities to be made aware of. Be it resolved that the Director of Education share with all staff and trustees the report prepared, prepared by parents of black children on anti-black racism in Ontario schools by April 19th, 2022.
Thank you, trustee Guzal. I'm going to ask for a secondary. Maybe somebody second please?
Trustee Agnew?
Voice chair and trustee Guzal, you have the floor to open up discussions and you have five minutes. Give me a second. Rosie, please come. Thank you, trustee Guzal. You have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So parent of black children's goals are to be the voice of all parents of black children. So no parent has to fight alone for a just, safe, and equitable education for their child. They also work towards eliminating anti-black racism and the oppression of black students at school and interconnected systems. They advocate to ensure school boards collect rigorous disaggregated race-based data. They open a continued dialogue with the school boards, independent and private schools about anti-oppression practices, culturally responsive pedagogy, and anti-black racism within their schools and connected systems. And their role is also to increase the knowledge of parents of black children and black students to advocate for change within the education and connected system to help facilitate their success. So part of their common goals are creating sustainable systemic and transformational change in Ontario's education systems. And their grounded principles are analyzing power, transparency and accountability, listening, appreciation, and gratitude. Parents of Black Children is federally funded, and their, their focus has been Ontario. And on March 9th, 2022, all directors and chairs of boards across Ontario were invited to attend a live information session via Zoom prior to the release of this report. During this announcement, I had the, the ability to attend. There was a highlight on school board to watch, and Halton Catholic District School Board was named as a board to be mindful of. The report was shared by Oxta, and Director Daly forwarded the said message to all trustees. However, this report needs to be shared with all staff as it impacts our board and is important for our boards to be aware of parents of black children and their advocacy towards all staff, parents, community, but most importantly, our students. For all these reasons, it is very important that this report be shared and shared to all, so that we can be made aware of what is happening and what we can do to make sure that we create safe schools.
Thank you, trustee Guzal. I shall now open up the floor to trustees for discussion debate. Yeah?
I don't believe the student trustees received that report.
Okay.
That trustee, you just mentioned.
So we have a question here, and I'll repeat it loudly for everybody. So question from trustee Tokiba is that student trustees have not received the report. So I'll pass this on to Director Daly.
I'll send it right now. She's correct. They did not receive it. I will forward it right now.
Thank you. Excellent. The floor is open to trustees for questions and discussion debate. Trustee Caravella, you have the floor, and trustee O'Brien. Trustee Caravella?
Thank you too. I also noticed, I think, well, trustee Yatomasi is having trouble with sound, so he has a question in the chat box. I don't know how you want to address that, but I will ask my question. I wanted to ask about the report. So is, is this something that Director Daly has planned to send to all the teachers? Like, I'm just wondering that we don't need a motion or that it could be done without a motion?
Thank you, trustee Caravella. I will pass this to Director Daly.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So as trustee Guzal noted, the report was forwarded to out of trustees on March 9th. I apologize for not forwarding to our student trustees. As I said, I'll do that tonight. We have shared it with senior admin and talked about, we're looking for it at two of our senior admin meetings. Our next full principals meeting, so joint meeting between elementary and secondary, is in May. So we had planned on bringing it to our school administrators, both to look at some of the case studies, to share the information, and to see how it might align or not with some of our own internal data. We hadn't discussed, to be honest with you, trustee Caravella, we had it up to the point to talk about how it might roll out to staff. Typically, we would follow that process of senior staff, school admin, and then to staff through school admin.
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee Caravella, do you have a follow-up question?
I do. I was wondering what we have in place currently for staff to report incidents on, on all racism.
Director Daly?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So it, it depends a little bit on, on what types of incidents we would be talking about. So we do have a policy on workplace harassment and discrimination. In terms of incidents of racism that may be witnessed in the classroom, on the playground, you know, student to student, we do have a procedure that we ask staff, and students for that matter, when they encounter that sort of situation to to kind of stop and disrupt it. Those sorts of incidents are also reported through our internal reporting system. We call it KICS form or our school incident form. So it does go through that system as well. We've met as senior staff five or six times over the last, I would say, maybe two months, maybe a little bit longer than that, around a more forward-facing process that would would be available to parents, to staff, parents, staff, and students to demonstrate when a complaint is brought forward, how exactly it's handled, and with some timelines around that. That would speak a little bit both to the transparency and accountability parts of that. We're close to having a draft to share and get some feedback from. As I said, I think we've met as a senior, or members of the senior team have met five or six times over the last couple of months with that, both with kind of visual flow chart and also a more detailed procedure that that principals would follow when they became aware of incidents at a school level.
Thank you, trustee Caravella. Moving on down the speaker's list, we have trustee O'Brien, trustee Guzal, and trustee DeRosa.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank my senior trustee for bringing this forward to take on. And I want to thank my esteemed trustee for bringing this forward to take on. To take on white privilege is always a brave motion. This report hasn't shared with the adult trustees and it is on the internet. And so I'm wondering, just behind the intention of this, does, if my fellow trustee will do answer this question, is she hoping that the sharing will lead to more awareness, uh, more robust discussions around it? She's willing to answer that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. I think I'll answer that question. I think it's very simply worded. Thank you, Trustee, Trustee. Trustee Guzo. Uh, I would like to say that let's take the motion the way it's written and let's not assume things what's been done. The word, word is very clear, just share it with staff and then go to the rest of them. So let's go by what it is and let's not assume things.
Well, I would just like to know if trustee, my trustee would like to answer if she wants.
I'll, uh, I'll reach out to Trustee Guzo and see if she wants to answer, Trustee Guzo?
Yes, I would actually like to answer the question that was directed to Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Really, at this point, it's it's now April, what's the date today? April fifth. This report was shared on March ninth. I truly believe it's something that particularly that our board is listed in there. It's important because it does impact our board, that our staff should be, it should be shared with staff and it should come from us or from our director and it shouldn't be that they hear about it from outside sources. And but I think it's also important that we acknowledge it and we share it in that sense. So so that really is the intent of this motion. And, uh, I I just think it's it's important, um, that we are aware of it and that staff who aren't necessarily aware of it, um, that they they be given it from our board.
Trustee O'Brien, uh, does it answer your question?
It doesn't. Through you, Mr. Chair, I thank, uh, thank my esteemed trustee for answering that.
Do you have a follow-up?
I do. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Daly. Director Daly, I just downloaded this this morning and, um, I haven't had a lot of time to look at it. So I think you know more about this than I. What role do our Halton, do our Halton parents play in coming out with this report?
Uh, Director Daly?
Uh, I I don't know if I would speak specifically to the role of our Halton parents per se. Parents for Black Children is a provincial organization with, um, kind of affiliated, um, uh, local parent groups. Uh, I think our role, I guess, or or parents' role would be, um, you know, the data that, uh, that the report presents is data that was received either from parents, potentially from staff. So, um, uh, Parents for Black Children do have an online reporting tool, uh, that people can use. I think that's where they gather their data from. So I think, um, that would be, I guess that's how I would say the connection with our parents. Um, and we've had a number of cases, um, in the board where, um, the advocacy work of of this particular parent group has been called upon in some school level issues that have been dealt with.
Thank you, Director Daly. Uh, next on the speaker list, uh, Trustee Guzo. Trustee Guzo, can I put you at the for closing? Can you, uh, I'd like to put on the list and leave other trustees an opportunity to speak, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I had a question, but it's okay, I can save it for later.
Next one speaker, this is Trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa and then Trustee Carabella. Trustee De Rosa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm just wondering, uh, I think what I'm hearing is that there's, uh, this report has been made public. Do we have an assessment or at least an idea of how much exposure it it actually, uh, has received? Maybe Director Daly, he would like to give me a sense of that.
Director Daly?
Trustee De Rosa, do you mean, uh, like within the board or in in general terms?
Uh, well, if it's on the internet, I suspect that we could probably, uh, figure out how many inquiries it's had, uh, whether it's either from, um, from the staff or from the general public.
Yeah, I I guess that that potentially would be possible. We we haven't, uh, I I don't have that information. We wouldn't have, um, we wouldn't kind of look to track it that way. Certainly widely distributed to all boards. So, uh, but not specifically distributed, uh, to our staff members or in our board.
Thank you. Trustee De Rosa, you have a follow-up question?
Uh, just a follow-up comment. I, um, I think it was Trustee Carabella who questioned as to whether this motion is actually necessary because the report itself has already had the exposure. I wish there was some some way of assessing to what extent that exposure has been. We may be able to do without, um, this motion. Is it really necessary? If in fact the report is public, if in fact it's had the exposure, if in fact it's already on the internet? Just a comment for consideration.
Thank you. As, uh, as you know, trustees are, they have the ability to bring the motion to the table. So I would not get into a discussion, what's the motive and why on this stuff. So the motion on the table is what we're talking about. Thank you, Trustee De Rosa. Moving on to the next speaker, Trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had, uh, wanted to the website as well and I was trying to understand the, uh, reporting that, um, is how they do their reporting and I understand that the reporting is done anonymously and, um, and as it's also provincial, province-wide. So, um, I'm, I'm just, um, wondering about that versus, you know, us handling the, um, I mean, us handling issues of all racism here at Halton Catholic, um, from what's happening right at our board. So, um, anyways, that's, that's what I'm asking about.
I'm not sure to answer that. Director Daly, you have, uh, the ability to answer that?
Um, I I guess I would say that while, um, i- it's true that the report does reflect, information from a number of wards or a number of, uh, reports about a number of wards across the province, whether it's in, um, in graphic form or in, um, some of the case studies or complaints that have come through about various boards. It does also, uh, refer to, uh, Halton Catholic District School Board in the report as well.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Do you have a follow-up question?
Uh, not now, thank you.
Thank you. So seeing none, I shall, there's not a speaker on the list. So I shall pass this on to Trustee Guzo for closing remarks and then shall take the word. Trustee Guzo?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. You know, this is a report that impacts our board and yes, it's available on the internet if people want to look for it. But the issue is, is all chairs, all directors were invited to this, to participate in this, to work with this community group, to make change, to make positive change within our school systems, to try to be preventative and to to bring knowledge and awareness and end anti-black racism for the safety of our students, our school community, our staff. It's always better when it's shared from us. It shows that we are taking an active role in this and that we recognize it and we acknowledge it. And I can appreciate the fact that it will be shared in May. However, this report has now been available since March ninth and I think it's important that all staff is aware that this exists, that this advocacy group exists for their students, for themselves, for community members. That being said, it's as simple as sharing a document. And I think that it is, uh, it would be very important to come from our board and particularly in our Director of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Guzo. I shall now call the vote. So trustees, we are voting on the motion in front of us, uh, on the screen. Uh, Trustee Murphy? In favor? Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
I think we've availed ourselves of the responsibility. I'm opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Antumasi? Okay, thank you, Trustee Antumasi, opposed, I see in the chat box. Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie? Trustee Mascherano?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
Trustee Watanara?
In favor.
Trustee Guzo?
In favor.
Voice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
And, uh, Trustee Duarte is in favor. Five in favor, four opposed. The motion carries. The report will be shared with staff. Moving on to the next action item. Eight point two, expansion of human rights and equity department. The following is a notice of motion from the March twenty-second, twenty-two, regular board meeting. Trustee Guzo, please read the motion.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board is committed to identifying and eliminating discriminatory systemic barriers as outlined in the Ontario's Human Equity Education Equity Action Plan of two thousand seventeen and the Ontario Minister of Education and Accepting Schools Act in a manner which is consistent with the exercise of HCSB's denominational rights under section ninety-three of the Constitution Act nineteen eighty-two and as recognized in section nineteen of the Ontario Human Rights Code. Whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board recognizes that equity and inclusive education policies and practices are of importance not only in dealing with human rights and equity matters, but in preventative measures and constant learning and the continued understanding of human rights and equity so that it can be embedded in all of our practices. Be it resolved that the Director of Education creates three additional positions in the Human Rights and Equity Department that will report to the Senior Manager of Human Rights and Equity in the upcoming budget so that it will be in place prior to the start of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Be it further resolved that one of the three positions be designated specifically to complete investigations of any complaints, concerns brought forward of any protected grounds violations described under the Human Rights Code from staff, parents, or students. This position would relate directly to the Senior Manager of Human Rights and Equity and would be responsible for submitting said report with any findings slash recommendations. Be it further resolved that a dedicated administrative position be assigned to the Human Rights and Equity Department.
Thank you, Trustee Guzo. It's moved by Trustee Guzo. I'm going to look for a second there. Trustee? Seconded by Trustee Murphy. Trustee Guzo, you have the floor to open up the discussions and you have five minutes.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. What is discrimination? Discrimination is when individuals are treated unfairly or unequitably based on their race, gender identity, gender expression, disability, sex, sexual orientation, creed, age, or any other ground protected by the Ontario Human Rights Code. It may be intentional or unintentional. While racial discrimination is sometimes displayed overtly, it is recognized that in many instances, racial discrimination takes on more subtle and covert, uh, covert forms. Human rights and equity are guiding values that are consistent both with Catholic social teaching, reaffirming the dignity of every individual as well as the Ontario Human Rights Code, which safeguards students and staff from discrimination based on the protected grounds. Our commitment to provide ongoing opportunities to acquire the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and behaviors needed to identify and eliminate discriminatory systemic barriers under the code is embedded in our equity and inclusive education policy. As a model learning community that is distinctly Catholic, we support all students to achieve, believe, and belong in accordance with the core principles of Catholic social teaching, equitable outcomes for all, the Ontario Human Rights Code, and commitment to upholding Indigenous rights and strengthening relationships with Indigenous communities. That last part that I have read comes directly from our board's vision in regards to strengthening human rights and equity within our board. This statement is strong, it's bold, and it means that we are enacting change. However, with the continual issues that continue to arise within our board, how are we achieving this? What are our measurable outcomes? At this point, with an equity manager of only one, it is difficult for us as a board to know what the impact of all of these policies and changes that we have put into place have had any, if had any at all, impact on our students and our staff. That being said, we need to ensure that we are protecting our staff and our students, most importantly. And by being preventative, this expansion will allow for that. It will allow for our board to continue to do the work that we have promised to do and that we've committed to do. The way to achieve this is through this motion. And I ask you, um, my fellow trustees, to support this motion. By having a third person in our, out of the three that we've asked, that one specifically designated to complete investigations, what we will do is we will allow for all of our students and staff to feel safe when coming forward and reporting instances of discrimination that are protected under the Ontario Human Rights, uh, Code. If this truly is our directive and this is our calling, then this is what we should have no issue in doing. And I ask that you support this so that we can move forward just in time for our budget so that come the beginning of the next school year, our focus can can change and shift to being preventative. We have done so much great work in all these other departments and I think now it's time for us to shift our focus and to live up to our commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Guzo. So I shall now open up the floor for trustees for discussion and debate. On the speakers list, I have Trustee Antumasi, Trustee O'Brien, uh, Voice Chair Agnew, and Trustee De Rosa. I think Trustee Antumasi, are you still having audio problems? Trustee Antumasi is having audio problems? Okay, you have a, yeah, okay, you have a question in the in the chat box. I'm going to ask that question. The question is, is the ministry through the GSN supporting this financially? Right? Okay, so I shall put this question to Superintendent Laughts. Superintendent Laughts?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, specifically, uh, no, there is some funding for the manager position, but anything direct would come from the board's budget itself, the GSN budget, as would other programs.
Thank you. I cannot ask Trustee Antumasi a follow-up question. So I shall move to the next speaker, Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And again, I want to thank my esteemed colleague for bringing this brave motion forward to, um, meet our equity needs. I really want to support these positions. However, I I really would like to know more about the roles and responsibilities in each of these positions first just so that I know exactly what they would be doing. And to keep in mind our, um, financial responsibility, I I would like to know the cost of these positions as well. If I knew that, I I think I would feel a lot more comfortable with, uh, going for this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. I shall once again pass it on to Superintendent Laughts. Superintendent Laughts, have you done the math?
I guess through you, Mr. Chair, for the three position and and the admin position, it would be between four and fifty thousand.
Could you repeat that once again? I couldn't hear the last one.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. For the three positions and the administrative position, it was estimated to be between four and four hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up?
For clarification, it's four hundred and fifty thousand for all three.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, Lieutenant Laughts?
Uh, that was the three positions as well as an administrative position. I believe there was four listed in the motion.
Okay.
So four positions.
Four positions. So, Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up question?
Well, I I I would like to know more about the roles and responsibilities, but if that can't be answered at this time, then I can wait.
Okay, thank you. So we shall now move on down this speakers list. I think Trustee Antumasi has a follow-up question, but Trustee Antumasi, can we just type it into the chat box? Your follow-up question and I will ask that, uh, to you today. Next on the speaker list is, uh, Voice Chair Agnew, Trustee De Rosa, and then Trustee Carabella. Voice Chair Agnew?
Uh, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So the question that I do have is, I I'd like to know, um, if we know, uh, other boards, um, who have dedicated staff to equity and inclusion? And if so, do we have any indication of, um, how many they would have on staff? And if so, do we have any indication of how many they would have on staff for those departments?
Maybe I can ask, uh, this is Jeraman. This is Jeraman, are you there?
Yes, good thing.
Do you have the answer to the question?
Um, I can find, do that, thank you for the question. Vice chair Agnew, and through you, Mr. Chair. So sort of, we were looking at, you know, what other boards have staffed for these positions. And I have some, uh, some of the boards that have this dedicated human rights and equity office, of which in the community of practice where we meet, we had sort of exchanged information on how many positions are staffed through this. And so without going into detail about which boards, we have about eight boards that have one human rights and equity advisor position in that community of practice, two that have a position currently, but in the process of adding another position. Four boards have two positions. One board has three point five positions, two boards have three positions, another board has four. York Region has five, and another board has twelve positions.
Thank you. Vice chair Agnew, do you have a follow-up question?
Uh, no, I don't have a follow-up question, just to comment that I will be supporting this motion. I don't think that we can put a price on equity and inclusion. So thank you very much for the answer.
Mr. Chair, may I? I have stats as well.
Okay, trustee Kuzo, you're answering the same question as vice chair Agnew.
It's the same, it's to answer vice chair Agnew's question. I have, I actually, and I noticed in the chat, somebody has asked which boards. I actually, I compiled a list of the boards and how many staff they have dedicated per capita of students.
Uh, can you put that in the chat box?
I can just say it. I know I gotta.
Yeah, I think I'd like to hear it.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'll start with our board. So we have thirty-seven thousand students, one equity manager. Dufferin Peel Catholic, eighty-one thousand students, three equity staff dedicated, which is is one staff member for every twenty-seven thousand students. York Catholic has fifty-four thousand students, two equity staff, twenty, one staff to every twenty-seven thousand students. Toronto Public, two hundred and forty-seven thousand students, eleven equity staff. That's one for every twenty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-five students. Durham Catholic has twenty-two thousand students, they have one equity person. Simcoe Catholic has twenty-two thousand students, they have one equity. Peel Public has a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty-three thousand students, seven equity to, which gives a ratio of one per twenty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven. Hamilton Wentworth Catholic has twenty-nine thousand, they have three dedicated equity staff, which is one for every nine thousand six hundred and sixty-seven. Toronto Catholic, ninety-one thousand students, ten dedicated equity and inclusive staff, nine thousand one hundred, that's one for every nine thousand one hundred students. Halton Public has fifty-nine thousand students, seven equity staff appointed to them. That's one for every eight thousand four hundred and twenty-nine students. Simcoe Public, fifty thousand students, six equity staff. That's one for every eight thousand three hundred and thirty-three. York Public has a hundred and twenty-two thousand students. They have fifteen staff that that oversee some sort of equity inclusion, that's one for every eight thousand one hundred and thirty-three. Durham Public, seventy-three thousand students, thirteen staff, that's one for every five thousand six hundred and fifteen students. And lastly, Hamilton Wentworth Public, fifty thousand students, they have ten staff for, which is one to every five thousand. I hope that helps.
Thank you, trustee Kuzo. Uh, moving on down the speakers list, we have trustee DeRosa, then trustee Caravella. Trustee DeRosa, you have the.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I, you know, the spirit of this motion is very easy to support, unfortunately. You know, we're being asked to make a decision that firstly, I agree with superintendent Lofts that the word least in terms of staff costs are looking at half a million dollars. And if we're gonna bring in soft costs that go with the administration and the running of this group, we're probably looking at three quarters of a million dollars. So I would, I would have liked to see tonight some form of a detailed financial analysis in support of the financial commitment that we're being asked to make. The other problem I have with this is that this is a discussion that needs to take place within the context of the budget that we're gonna be, that's gonna be put in the front of us. I don't know whether seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at this stage of the game represents one percent of all the budgetary inclusions or ninety percent of it. And that is a relevant perspective to have. So at this stage of the game, I'm not prepared to support this this motion because of basically the lack of information and primarily financial information, which is a primary responsibility of my colleagues. And I'm not prepared to make a financial decision of three quarters of a million dollars on the basis of, you know, loose estimates or on the basis of what other boards have done. I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. I think the numbers presented by superintendent Lofts was four hundred and fifty thousand, not seven hundred and fifty thousand. Makes a difference, so correction.
Mr. Chair, I said soft costs.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving down the speakers list, we have trustee Caravella, trustee Caravella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also, I am reluctant to support this motion because of the financial commitment upfront without seeing details from report. I don't know if staff, how they feel about this as well, how all this would unfold itself. I also don't know the amount of work that is going to be needed. Like usually you would have a need and then have a need that's measurable and a staff then is appointed for that measurable need. I'm worried that it's coming out of our budget without extra government support. And we are about to launch into the budget process where usually we are giving you initiatives. Staff spends a lot of time putting those together. And there's just a whole part of the process that this motion hasn't been able to partake in. So I, at this point, I won't be able to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Caravella. Next on the speakers list, we have trustee Watanara, trustee Murphy, trustee Antumasi, trustee Bowie, trustee Hornzorota.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to superintendent Lofts. Um, the additional FTE that's being requested in this motion and the admin FTE as well, have we, in previous budgets, the pre-planning that go into budgets where all the departments would come with their, let's say, for lack of a better word, wish list? Have we done this in the past and has it?
Superintendent Lofts.
Uh, yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Just, are you asking, have we done this? Normally what would happen is we would bring the, for lack of a better term, the new initiatives or the program enhancements to the board of trustees for approval when we do the budget. So we do bring it that way, at least since I've been here, trustee Hornzorota. So I guess to answer your question, that's how we've done it since I've been here, and I've been here about five years or so, so.
Wasn't very clear. Let me, my question is more of, have we tried to add manpower, person power to this department in previous years and never got to the table? Or is this the first time we're looking at adding manpower FTEs to this department? That's really my question, sorry, I wasn't clear, that was my fault.
Great, superintendent Lofts.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I believe this is the first time, I can go back and check to make sure, but I believe it is the first time, yes.
Thank you, superintendent Lofts. Trustee Watanara, you have a follow-up?
Not at this time, no.
Thank you. Moving down speakers list, we have trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Where to start? You know, we, in Milton and chair Duarte can attest this. We have a lot of population growth and we have a lot of demographic change. And it's very, very evident to, you know, it's, yes, it could be antedoteable by saying this, but it's very evident. Uh, more and more, we're bringing, brought into various situations where there is misunderstandings, which I believe are misunderstandings. I believe the intent of the majority of people in general is always good, but as we know, intent doesn't necessarily guarantee it gets the same, the impact that's intended. So based on the situations that I've been involved in just lately, I see that there is, we're missing some connective tissue. We have, we have great intent, but we're missing that mediation portion, which is one thing I would like to bring up with this, with this motion, is I think we also need to add in the mediation element. And from what I see, most of the investigations could have been mitigated by that mediation element of having somebody who is trained and has the ability to listen to both sides and then to to express what they see and to bring both sides together. So I would like to see us add mediation into into this motion. But we'll, I'll talk about that in a minute. So we can, we can do nothing and wait. And organically, we know that as our demographics change and societies changes, eventually we'll get to a place where it's more reflective of our society. So that, but that's twenty years. So in that twenty years, we know that there will be continued misunderstanding and continued negative impact. So our responsibility really is, is to try and minimize that impact. And the way we can minimize that impact is by education. It's by mediation when required investigation to come up with equitable resolutions. That's what we want. We want fair resolutions. We don't want it to fortify our position, we don't want to prove our right or somebody else is wrong. What we want is harmony and equitable solutions, so everybody has fair opportunity. You know, we all know our society is in transition, it's in rapid transition over the last few years. So I think it's time, it's necessary for us to put all our good intentions into practice and to expand this department. I think it's critical. Luckily, we're talking about the budget tonight, and you know, roughly our revenue is four hundred and fifty million dollars and our expense on this is four hundred and fifty thousand, so that's point one percent of the budget. Not much of a mystery there. So maybe it's a few fifty thousand one way or the other, but it's roughly around that expense. Uh, and we have the ability and expertise to to manage our expenses, I'm sure, to cover that. Because what's the cost of inaction? So the cost of inaction is, first of all, negative impact to our reputation, which we have seen. There is potential legal expense, which we're seeing a bit of that. We have potential loss of students, we have potential loss of staff, we have loss of confidence in the community, in our ability to manage the school. So I think the costs of doing nothing are significant. We all have the right intention. We need support to make sure that we can fulfill that and minimize the negative impacts that inadvertently are going to happen because we all have different life experience and we come from different places. So so I think it's important to support this motion. I would like to see us add into the motion a mediation point. I'll leave that for other trustees to comment if they will, if they're interested to. Uh, and then it's so that we can, we can make an amendment to add that word in. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Forgot to turn the timer on, so we've got more than three minutes.
Pass chair, I'll find her, I think it's in our files.
Okay, moving on down, we have trustee Antumasi again. I think it was a question here in the chat box, and I'll read that question for everybody to answer. When was the last time the board underwent a staff re-donance review? Now, I'm not sure how that relates to the motion on the floor. So I will pass that question and go on to the next speaker. Uh, next speaker is trustee Bowie, trustee Bowie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. If she's comfortable with answering, I'd like to ask Ms. Jeraman if she foresees being our first member of the Human Rights Equity Department as it stands, if she foresees in the future whether this will fulfill a need, perhaps allow us to expand certain programs? What her opinion would be on expanding this department if she's comfortable with it?
So that's, okay, I shall put, Mr. Jeraman, or Mr. Jeraman? Are you comfortable answering this or is the question a bit too big?
Thank you for the question, and perhaps I can just provide a little bit of background around. I tried to listen to the question, but there were parts where trustee Bowie's voice faded out, so I'll do my best to answer. So I've been working, you know, absolutely, I think that there is a need to have more robust staffing for this department to grow, as was mentioned currently. And for the last few years, it's been a department of one, and I've been working with director Daley and staff to use the budget process to ask for additional staffing, to do some of those pieces as director Daley had earlier mentioned about the incident reporting process, recognizing that there'll be more need for building, proactively building capacity, building awareness, you know, mediation, creating awareness. So definitely, I think the need is there, and I've been working with director Daley and finance department to put in for that expansion of the Human Rights Office.
You, Jeraman, trustee Bowie, do you have a follow-up? Thank you. Director Daley, would you like to add something?
Um, just to maybe add to, to talk about a little bit of the process that we would use internally, and it speaks a little bit to what trustee Watanara brought up about, you know, the wish list. So our internal process that senior staff's going through right now would involve staff looking at what they see as needs in their particular department. And some of those needs might be, it might be continuation of processes or budget that's been in place in the past. It might change in a different direction depending on direction we've had from the board. We've seen that in the past with regards to the scheme initiative, the current scheme initiative that we're under. So what we ask staff to do in that budgeting process is to to make a case for a position or for additional funding. So they they talk about financial impact, some of the background, how it aligns with the strategic plan, what the implementation plan would be, potential costs, where revenue may come from. And trustees would recall in the past that sometimes when we do come to the budget discussion, oftentimes a new initiative is aligned with a specific funding stream and then, but sometimes it's not. In the cases where it's not, then we have to make a rationale for for how we would support that. So that's, that's kind of the internal process that Seda talked about there. And in terms of our internal process, we have, all of our staff have submitted those requests. And we'll be going through them as a senior staff in order to be able to bring them to the board. There has been a couple of human rights, in human rights and equity, not the exact same ones that maybe are being presented tonight, but it is something that we're considering internally as well.
Thank you, director D. So now all the speakers have had their chance to debate. We shall now, question time now. Trustee DeRosa, do you have a question?
My hand is up as well, Mr. Chair.
Okay, vice chair, I'll put you next, trustee DeRosa, you don't mind?
Next time I'll be quicker on the trigger.
Okay, trustee DeRosa, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'm gonna pass my, my turn. I've said what I have to say.
Thank you, vice chair Agnew.
Uh, thank you very much, and through you, Mr. Chair. I just did have a really quick question with respect to some of the stats that were shared earlier regarding the boards that do have support in these departments and the number of support. I'm just, there was a lot of information that was shared, and I'm just wondering, where do we sit relative to those other boards as far as, as far as our resource? as far as, as far as our resources, our human resources, specific to equity and inclusion? I'm just wondering where we sat on that in all of that information that was shared.
So I'll pass this to Mr. Keraman. Or Director Daley?
Well, I don't think, I don't think Seda brought forward all the information. I think trustee Guzzo did. But listening to, I mean, for using the comparison of how many staff per how many student, and I think that's what, part of what trustee Guzzo presented, I would say we're, we would be out of that list. We'd be at the lower end as opposed to even in the middle. I think what I, my limited history teacher math was somewhere around, you know, 110, 1 to 10 to 20,000 students. And right now, we have one dedicated staff member to, you know, over 35,000 students. But I'll leave it to trustee Guzzo maybe to correct my math.
Yes, trustee Guzzo, do you have the numbers?
I do. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So out of the 15, the school board that had the most was Hamilton Wentworth Public. Then before ours, at 27,000, there was two boards. That's one staff per 27,000 students, which was Dufferin Peale Catholic and York Catholic. And out of the 15, we have the least amount of staff per student per capita at one at 37,000. There's nobody who has more students to one staff. So Director Daley, his limited history teacher math, he was correct. But we are, we're actually, out of the 15, we have the least amount of staff per capita of students.
Director Daley?
Yeah, and without kind of digging too much into the degree of staffing at other boards, particularly with the public boards, sometimes they are able to allocate what some of their staffing might be supervising principals. And we don't have that ability in our board. But, so sometimes there's a little bit more flexibility. But regardless, if you're putting an FTE in place, it's a cost. So those boards aren't bearing that cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, you. Okay, thanks. Moving on down the speakers list, we have trustee Carabella. You have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that when we had the STEAM, the extra consultant, I think it was like a half-time consultant that was hired on for the STEAM initiative, which is low compared to the 450,000 estimate. And going straight to like four new staff members. Oh, there's an echo or is... Okay. So my question is to Superintendent Lofts, where will this revenue come from? Like the revenue come from to pay, to have these positions if we approve all four positions requested?
Mr. Chair, may I answer the question?
Yes, yes, I can.
I'd just like to actually address maybe the first part of trustee Carabella's comment. And I kind of missed it. Did you say that it seems low? At least I heard it expand on that part so I can understand what she meant.
Yes. No, I was referring to the STEAM consultant. I think we hired a STEAM consultant. Was it not a full-time position as well?
The STEAM consultant is a teacher, which would be a different cost than these positions would be trustee Carabella. So it's not the apples to oranges, or it's not apples to apples, apple to an orange in this case. But with respect to the other part of your question, where would the revenue come from? The revenue would come from, it would be part of the budget process and we'd have to see. And if it comes through, we will make the adjustments within our budget process. If it is a will of the board, we can make that, we would have to make that adjustment.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
Yes, I have a follow-up.
Go ahead, trustee Carabella.
Well, if I understood, Ms. Seda was saying that she would be asking like for an expansion for her Human Rights Office. So I'm just wondering about whether the process that should be in place for staff, you know, to ask for help is a bit circumvented? That I don't understand if there was discussions that then this motion was able to be put together with information that, like, I haven't been aware that these discussions were going on or that these needs were happening. So I'm just trying to find out how these needs were made known and not following the usual process. Thank you.
Mr. Keraman?
Sorry, I interrupted. I don't believe that question, I hope that question wasn't directed to staff. This is a motion that's come forward via a motion of the board.
Mr. Chair, I can answer that because it is my motion.
Okay, trustee Guzzo, go ahead.
Yes, so what trustee Carabella, if, correct me if I'm wrong, is what I'm hearing you're implying was that there was stuff that was done in the background and shared only with me as opposed to with all trustees. That is not the case. What the case is, is as we've seen over the last, we're in our fourth year now, of different issues and different advocacy groups coming forward in regards to equity and inclusion in our board. All of the work that has been done and continues to come forward and is put on one person in our department. So yes, budget is coming up. And yes, I have asked questions, just like all other trustees, when let's say STEAM has been brought to the table or expanding French immersion has been brought to the table or expanding AP or IB has been brought to the table. I ask the questions and I put my motion together. No, nothing was circumvented. And the fact that it was implied is very upsetting. And that has not happened whatsoever. I use the same process that I use with everybody else. And this motion has been on the table, was provided to everybody three weeks ago. So to answer your question, that's it. The question that was asked of Ms. Seda was if she thought that it should be expanded and she answered yes. That doesn't mean that there was anything that has gone on.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Thank you, trustee Carabella. Moving on. Sorry, trustee Carabella?
Yeah, can I have a follow-up?
There was a follow-up. I'll put you back in the queue, okay? So we'll go to trustee Bowie first and then come back to you. Trustee Bowie?
Thank you. I just had a follow-up question earlier. Director Daley mentioned the process through which senior staff and that types of provisions to budget allocations would be made. Is that something that comes to the board? And if so, when will that come to the board? And if not, when will that review take place?
Director Daley?
I'll ask Superintendent Lofts to answer that one in a little bit more detail. It does come to the board. But Erin, can you talk a little bit more about the specifics?
Superintendent Lofts?
Yes, and through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Director Daley is correct. We do bring it towards, to the board. Right now, we're going through the process and we've already collected all the business cases for the upcoming budget year. We still need to compare that, all the cases, with what our estimated funding will be for the upcoming year. Once we talk about the positions and such and all the, lack of a better term, the asks, or I'm gonna call the program enhancements and newer initiatives, we would go through that and then bring it to the trustees and bring it to a meeting typically in May. We would bring that meeting to board to inform the board what we're looking at and what some of the asks have been for the upcoming year. So it kind of goes through the, I guess, the filter, I guess, or lack of a better term, not so much the filter, but the examination would be, we bring it to senior admin and we discuss it there first. And then we come back and make adjustments and bring it to board once we come up with the overall picture and we bring it back to board to discuss.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. Do you have a follow-up question there?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
So just another question clarification. When this does come to the board, any demands or asks or program enhancements made by senior staff? So would those be then just presented to the board as an information item and then the board would have to decide through a motion whether to grant that request? Or would that be something that would be part of the budget approval process?
Superintendent Lofts?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It would be part of the budget process. The items would be listed on the budget. We've done it in past years. And how it works is we bring them forward and we present it either as a new initiative or program enhancement. New initiative would be something new. Program enhancement would be expanding on a program that already exists or something that we do that already exists. But we would bring it to board for approval as part of the budget process.
Thank you, Director Daley.
Just, and ultimately, it's the board that approves, I don't know.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. Moving on down the speakers list, we have trustee Carabella and then trustee O'Brien. Trustee Carabella, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with regard to French immersion, the STEAM and the AP program, this is a question to Superintendent Lofts. Those programs, we were, there was a report involved where trustees brought, asked for the report and then it came back with the financials. And is that correct?
Superintendent Lofts?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't necessarily remember the financials for all of those items. Trustee Carabella, I wasn't really prepared to answer that question. I'm not sure how much involved, we got into financials for the French immersion and the French conversation. At the top of my head, I'm going to top my head right now. I don't necessarily recall.
Daley? Yeah, my recollection is that certainly for the STEAM consultant, because that was a new position, that did come to the board with a rationale. Some of the other supporting positions around STEAM were allocations made under the latest collective agreement. So that was a little bit, that was treated a little bit differently. Go ahead.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
So the follow-up, I remember with the AP program in Georgetown, in Halton Hills, that it came back with a certain amount. I think it was, I forget, 80, maybe 60, 80,000? I don't remember. But the point I'm trying to make is that this, it's a large amount what we're asking for. It's $450,000 and I think it requires study. That's all. There's no like, I think it's just a way that we should be proceeding at our board. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. We have trustee O'Brien next.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. To Superintendent Lofts, Superintendent Lofts, if you have the information available. If you don't, that's fine. You mentioned $450,000. So how many Chromebooks would that be?
Superintendent Lofts, a simple math question for you.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I don't necessarily know if that's really relevant, but I can do a quick calculation. So 450,000 and let's say it's roughly, I'm gonna say 800 or so per. So about 560.
560, good clarification.
Yes.
And just a comment.
As an estimate, trustee O'Brien, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Next question was, sorry. We have trustee DeRosa next with this question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I'm not very quick on the trigger on the microphone here. So I apologize for that. I have a very simple question. If we approve this motion tonight, regardless of the fact that, you know, the figure is really not tied down, what happens during the budget, what happens during the budget process? And for some reason, it doesn't get approved there. What happens then? Or are we, is the understanding is that if we approve it tonight, it will get approved at the budget, the budget session?
Yes, trustee DeRosa, I think this answer was given earlier in the evening that Superintendent Lofts did say that they will take it back to the budget and put it in there. So I think the answer was out there already.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, but there's a lot of echo and I'm a little deaf.
So the answer was given out this evening by Superintendent Lofts that if this is approved tonight, it will go into the budget and adjustments will be made accordingly.
Including taking it out completely?
Yes. Yes, if we pass this, then accounting will use these numbers, three positions and budget accordingly.
Yeah, I'm concerned that we get ourselves in a position, Mr. Chair, where we approve something that ultimately doesn't carry the day on the budget decision. That's all I'm concerned with. Thank you.
Thank you. So seeing all the speakers, I'm gonna ask, I did hear this evening about an amendment from trustee Murphy about any word or something. Is any trustee, you can do that or trustee Murphy?
Nobody had commented on that. It's, we're still early in what the rules and responsibilities of this position would be. I don't want to muddy the waters, but once it, once if it goes through, we can, we can always have a discussion.
Thank you. Seeing all the speakers, I'm going to hand the floor over to trustee Guzzo to present the closing remarks. And you have three minutes.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to close this. And listening to all the comments, is there, is there a price tag we can put on making sure that our students are taken care of? Is there a price tag we can put on our staff feeling safe in our schools? Is there a price tag that we ensure that people who are in the minorities in a protected ground know that there is an outlet for them that they can reach out to and be part of? Is there a price tag we can put on that? The answer is no. Other boards seem to have managed to find the money and the resources, whether it's funded or not, directly through the ministry. And we already know that it is partially funded through the ministry, our senior manager's position. So the question is, can we really put a price tag to it? The answer is no. We talk about, all about being focused on equity and inclusion and our equity inclusion policy. And we talk about dealing with racism and discrimination and responding with faith and hope and love. But how do we respond with faith and hope and love? How do we ask all of our admin and our staff who are already busy trying to do what they need to do, then to also become experts in equity and inclusion? That's a big ask. So why would we not have somebody specialized in that? Why would we not have something that is dedicated to that? We have departments that are dedicated to lots of different things throughout our board. How are we not able to see that equity and inclusion is one of the most important things that we preach every day? Every day that we talk about, everything that we put, everything that we put things into. What does the Lord require of you but to do justice and to love kindness and to walk humbly with your God? Micah 6:8. It is right in our racism and discrimination responding with faith, hope and love document. We talk about Catholic school teachings. We talk about human rights. We talk about indigenous rights and we talk about equity. It really is simple, trustees. It's time for us now to do the work and continue to do the work and build on what we've already done and ensure that we give everybody the tools that they need to create a safe, inclusive and equitable school system. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. I shall now call the board. Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Janamasi is against. Trustee Carabella?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
Trustee Uchichanara?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Master Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Abolled.
And trustee Duarte is in favor. So we have five in favor, four opposed, the motion carries. Moving on to the next order of business, staff reports. There are no staff reports tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee DeRosa, you have a chat box.
I have a, I have a point of privilege to raise, if you don't mind. I need to leave the assembly. I apologize to all of my colleagues, but for personal reasons, I need to withdraw. I apologize to all of my colleagues, but for personal reasons, I need to withdraw. Thank you.
That's our, that's our point of privilege, but that's a request. Thank you. Take care. Good night.
Bye-bye.
The next order of business is information items. The first item is student trustee updates. Student trustee, please, you are the article.
I will start with achievement. So last Tuesday, the policy for student, it was voted on and passed at our March 29th meeting. It was handed with expectations for a monthly review and update. It requires mostly updates on the Senate board and student achievements to be posted on our official Senate social media accounts. Student trustees additionally discussed the uniform policy and mental health policies with the student senate. And we're currently in the stages of collecting Senator feedback on those policies ahead of the next policy committee meeting. And the achievement and leadership committee is excited to be holding guest speaker nights starting in April as part of their Invest Yourself campaign. We will approach more details coming soon as well. I do have an update that came after rewriting and drafting of this report related to our student senate energy contest. So the results for the energy contest have been found and they will be sent out via email, I believe, to all students and stakeholders on the board. I will pull up, I have a, an advanced copy of the results for all trustees today. So I'm very excited to be reading those out. Right. So the top school that decreased their energy consumption over the course of these two weeks was Assumption Catholic Secondary School, which decreased their consumption by 20%. Notre Dame was next, decreasing their consumption by 18%. Then in third place was a tie between Holy Trinity and St. Thomas Aquinas, who both decreased their consumption by 17%. Loyola was in fifth place, decreasing their consumption by 16%. Corpus Christi decreased their consumption by 5%. Bishop Reading decreased their consumption by 4%. And then St. Francis Xavier increased by 4% over the course of the two weeks and Christ became increased by 10% over the course of the two weeks. So I'm very excited to share those results with trustees. We are very proud of how the initiative went and all of our schools that were successful in decreasing their energy consumption over those two weeks. And I'm very glad to be highlighting the hard work of all of our students in competing last month. Next up is believing. Some more updates on the Environmental Stewardship Committee. At our last student senate meeting, they presented another successful proposal. This one in regards to Earth Week coming up later in April, which will include activities and announcements educating staff and students on the different causes of climate change. The goal is to educate students on the sacredness of life and earth and to ensure that students respect their own essence, Jesus' mind. I believe this is happening the week after Easter, so it kind of works perfectly. That Easter Monday is a holiday and then we're kind of like segueing into the Earth Day initiative. The Catholic Faith and Action Committee has been releasing Instagram posts on our Senate Instagram account explaining what Lent is, how to fast and encouraging followers to join PHCCF's 24-hour fast.
And I'll be doing the login section. So during our monthly senate meeting, the special education standing committee passed a motion to support the implementation of the Best Buddies program across all secondary schools. Students who decide to join the program will get resources and guidance prior to their student incomes. This program provides students in different streams to foster authentic friendships. With extracurricular and spring sports starting, students are excited to try out for different teams and attend school games to support their school. Finally, the student award of excellence ceremony was held on April 4, 2022. This award recognizes exceptional students across elementary and secondary schools.
Thank you, trustees. Trustees, do we have any questions for students?
Trustee O'Brien.
Oh, trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Board. Through you, Mr. Chair, to any of our trustees and trustees. Thank you again for another great report regarding the proposal of the Environmental Stewardship Committee for Earth Week. You mentioned the goal is to educate students on the sacredness of life and earth. Would this also include the sacredness of life from conception to natural death of all of God's creatures?
I can answer that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I don't wish to, I couldn't speak on behalf of the committee, but I believe that because of their name, the Environmental Stewardship Committee, they're mostly focused on environmental stewardship, taking more of an environmental stance, considering what the earth is natural resources. I have seen the-
Thank you, trustee Bowie.
Yes, I looked at the resources that they're giving in further detail and it does purport the sacredness of life as is related to the sacredness of natural life or natural environments, ecological sustainability, preserving biodiversity and the like. It does not have a specific focus regarding the sacredness of human life from birth from conception to death.
I didn't say that.
Oh.
Sorry. I said of all God's creatures.
Yes, yes.
Of all God's creatures.
Thank you, trustee Chopra and trustee Bowie. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. And we do not have any other questions for trustees. Very good. Thank you, student trustees, for your updates. And I'm a little concerned about the energy consumption going up in some of the schools and we can't actually. But yeah, we are, we are very encouraged to see the various activities here in regular schools. Good to see that everybody's back and working on three pillars of each of the living and belonging of the school. Moving on to the next item on the information items, item 10.2, 2021, 2022 budget report, second quarters, September 1st, 2022 to February 28th, 2022, Superintendent Lofts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please find attached the quarterly report from September through February 2022, which is halfway through our fiscal year and about 60% or not about, but 60% through our school year. The findings are in line with our expectations. Adam Cross, our senior manager of financial services, or I am available for any questions.
Sorry, I was expecting to be a longer report. Trustee, trustees, do we have any questions for Superintendent Lofts? Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Superintendent Lofts. You caught us napping. I have two questions for you. One relates to the, let me find it here, point number eight on your financial, on the expenses section. So library guidance was increased due to reallocation of secondary guidance teachers from classroom teachers' general ledger accounts. Can you explain that? I just couldn't understand. And maybe you have some of that?
Superintendent Lofts?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I'm going to defer to Adam. Adam's on the line. We did do a reclassification that kind of moved things around internally, but I'll hand it over to Adam maybe to address it a little more. Adam, are you there?
Yep, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Murphy. So pretty much every year, the ministry requires us to do additional reporting for various items through our EPIS sort of reporting portal. The last year, there's been a focus on library and guidance and showing the true costs to all the boards when it comes to library and guidance. And so through our process of reconciling and reporting to the board, we noticed that at the secondary panel, some of our guidance teachers were coded still as teachers in our HR system, which flows through to our general ledger accounting system. And so this year, we embarked on recoding them and reclassifying them as guidance teachers in our HR system, which feeds into our reporting system so that we could report accurately back to the ministry, our guidance teacher costs.
Makes sense. Follow-up question regarding appendix nine, so the COVID revenue expense summary. We see that 3.7 million has not been paid into remaining balance. Given that a lot of the restrictions have been reduced, do we have an expectation of receiving that 3.7 million?
Superintendent Lofts?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we do. Trustee Murphy, we will, I have no doubt that we will be receiving those fundings. We've been, those fundings have been committed to us, so we should be receiving those funding, even though a lot of the restrictions have been, I guess, lifted in the last little while. But we should be receiving those funds. They're still, it's still receivable to the board.
Great, thank you. Just a comment, thank you for the report with the notes. It's, it's very detailed and fulsome and it's quite easy to, to follow and understand. So thank you very much. I appreciate that hard work.
Thank you. Next on the speaker list, we have trustee Caravella and then trustee Guzzo. Caravella, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was wondering, I know it's not prepared in this presentation, but everything here is for like estimates revised and, and future. And is there a reason that we can't have a column with like the actual money spent?
Superintendent Lofts?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We actually do have the actual amounts included in this, trustee Caravella, they are there?
Is that the first column? Financial statements? Those are the actuals?
We have it under the actual, it's under the risk assessment where it says, I'm looking at Excel, but it says at the top, 21, 22 expenses actual at February 28, 2022. It's about midway in the, almost right in the middle of the page.
Do we know which page it is?
I'm looking right now, it's, if you look on the expense one, would be appendix 8:2.
8:2?
Yeah. Right in the middle almost of that page. And you can look at the top, it says 21, 22 expense actual.
Okay.
28, 2022. So that would be our expenses up to that point in time, up to the end of February.
Is that on each of the, each of the pieces?
It would be, yes.
Okay, I'll have to, oh, I see. Yeah, okay, good. So I will study that going forward and I have a follow-up question.
Go ahead, trustee Caravella.
Thank you. So let's say, you know, you estimate, I'm just going to use easy numbers. I'm not going to point to a particular thing. You estimate something will cost $200,000. It ends up only costing $150,000. Where does that $50,000 go that wasn't used? That you estimated it would be used, it wasn't used for that item? Where does that $50,000 go?
Theoretically, all things being equal, let's say every other item-
Sorry. Yep.
We spent it right to our budget. That would go to our surplus at the end of year. So we would bring it back as a surplus to the board at the end of the year. It would go into our reserves, assuming everything else was spent to budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on the speaker list, we have trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo?
Yes, I just wanted to say to Superintendent Lofts and to staff that, thank you, it was a, it was a great report to read. I, I don't always follow well through these and leave it to, to hear from you when you go through it. But this was, this was a really great and comprehensive budget report. And I think it was trustee Murphy who even said with the notes, it's always good, the legends that, that are there. It was, it was really, really easy to navigate and thank you for all the work that was put into it. Much appreciated.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. I'd like to thank my staff too. Adam's on the line as well, so we can definitely relay that back. But yes, there is work put into this and I'm glad it's appreciated. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Lofts. I see no other questions. So, so our thanks to staff once again for putting this together and being very meticulous with these numbers. So moving on to the next order of business is the superintendent's side information. The minutes of the February 28th, 2022 CAC meeting is in your package. The minutes are provided for your information. Next order of business is correspondence is in your package. Ministry of Manos, correspondence from Art Ferrera and Anne Lorenco. The package, the information is in your package. Moving on to the next order of business, which is open question period. Have any questions been submitted? Director Denny, do we have any questions?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So you noted that there was some correspondence, item 12.3. That correspondence also includes, I think, nine or 10 questions with regards to the secondary school assessments report, staff report. It was brought to board a couple of meetings ago. You know, based on the number of questions, we're not prepared to answer them right here at the board table, but we'll give a written response both to the questionnaire and we'll copy all trustees on the answers as well and make sure that they go into the next quarter.
Thank you, Director Denny. Moving on to the next order of business, we're in camera and we do not need to go into the camera tonight. We have next order of business, resolution regarding absentees. We have no absentee this evening. And finally, the last order of business is the judgment and closing prayer. What's the time? It's 9:30. So judgment and closing prayer. Yeah, I have a motion to adjourn.
Move to O'Brien.
Move by trustee O'Brien. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. All in favor?
There.
Favor?
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion is, I shall now ask trustee Caravella to lead us in the closing prayer. Trustee Caravella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to gather us that, bring our hearts towards Holy Week next week. We won't be meeting, but I wanted to end this board meeting with a reflection and a prayer. It's from the Stations of the Cross and the beginning part is from John Paul II, his apostolic exhortation on the meaning of suffering. And then there's a short prayer. It says, so it's, this is the beginning of the Stations of the Cross. "The Christian loves to follow the way of the cross in the Savior's footsteps. The stations from the praetorium to Galata and the tomb trace the passion and death of Christ, who by His holy cross has redeemed the world. To understand the mystery of redemption and the salvific meaning of suffering, one ought to meditate upon the sufferings of our Lord, which He took upon Himself to save us from sin. God is always with those who suffer. His omnipotence is manifested precisely in the fact that He freely accepted suffering. He could have chosen not to do so. He could have chosen to demonstrate His omnipotence even at the moment of the crucifixion. Name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen." And now this is a short prayer that, that starts off the Stations of the Cross. Says, "My Lord and my God, under the loving eyes of our mother, we are making ready to accompany you along this path of sorrow, which was the price paid for our redemption. We wish to suffer all that you suffered, to offer you our poor contrite hearts, because you are innocent and yet you are going to die for us, who are the only really guilty ones. My mother, virgin of sorrows, help us to relive these, those bitter hours which your son wished to spend on earth, so that we, who were made from a handful of clay, may finally live in the freedom and glory of the children of God. In the name of the Father, Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen."
Thank you, trustee Caravella. Thank you, all trustees and staff for a great meeting. Good night.
Thank you.